10th 2024 City Council Work Session Meeting. Our meetings are public and you're welcome to join us in person or by watching from our council's agenda page, Zoom, Facebook, YouTube, or SLCTV. We hope you'll continue to join us in whichever manner you feel most comfortable. This is a work session meeting during which there is no public comment. Please join us at the Sorenson Center on September 17th during our 7:00 PM formal meeting to share your comments. We of course welcome your feedback anytime by mail to PO Box 145476, Salt Lake City, Utah, 84114-5476, by email at council comments at slcgov.com, or via our 24-hour phone comment line, 801-535-7654. Comments we receive on agenda topics are shared with council members and posted to our website, slccouncil.com. We'll now begin our work session and the first item on the agenda is updates from the administration. I see that we've got Andrew Johnston, the Director of Homelessness Policy and Outreach, and Katie Reiser, there she is, Special Projects and Volunteer Program Manager, and I see Lindsay Nicola and the Mayor. We're getting all of, all of the administration's greatest stars are here with us this morning, this afternoon. We'll turn the time over to you all.
Okay. Can we go to the next slide? Thanks for giving us time. I wanted to kick off this, the conversation that we want to have and we get to have with you today in a work session about an update on the Critical Connections grant money that we had, have, and the process that we're in because early this fall it's going to begin in earnest in a public way. You can go to the next slide please. We were awarded, as you know, a Reconnecting Communities Grant from USDOT and the point of the grant was for us to hold a community conversation about healing the West-East divide. And the process is designed to empower the community to help us define a problem statement about exactly what the issue of that divide is to people who experience it, propose and then evaluate a number of potential solutions to the divide, and then test these potential solutions against the cost benefit feasibility and other criteria so that decision makers like you can bring that conversation along. Well, the process is also going to choose a solution or possibly a set of solutions and take those a little bit further, those best solutions that help define the problem. And that could be a variety of smaller projects or programs or a big transformative project. And we know that the city council and one council member in particular is very excited about one giant transformative project that will certainly be in these conversations. And it could also be something in between. It will conclude, the project and through the grant funding will conclude with some preliminary engineering drawings and also cost estimates for those agreed upon solutions or singular solution. We don't know which yet. And it will also provide us a planned, a plan to fund and implement those solutions. The project kickoff is slated very shortly in early fall. And in case you wanted to remember what the breakdown is, we did a local match. UTA brought $500,000 to it. Funding Our Future did 1.24 million. RD8 did 25,000 and DPU did 5,000. So that's where we're at and the community is going to see a lot more to come in these coming months. You're welcome.
Councilmember, please.
You know, it was incredible news when we got that grant and it was a huge accomplishment of your administration to follow up that grant and getting, getting awarded that money. It was a big deal. I, I am excited for this, this report to come back with something and hopefully something amazing and I'm sure it will be because, you know, we need to heal that connection. I wonder if this, if there is a deadline to when these results should come out, knowing that the infrastructure money will expire and, you know, and I'm worried that these results might take too long and then we have recommendations that are huge, but then we have no funding mechanism for that, for those.
I don't think John's in the room. Is he behind me, Larson? I, what I should have said before I finished is we will be happy to come back to you with not only obviously the final plan, but there's going to be a lot of community engagement along the way and our administrative updates at the beginning of your work sessions will include those opportunities to hear from the community. But why, we would be open, very happy to do a smaller work session item with transportation to talk about how we came to this point. My understanding is we moved as fast as we could in the RFP process to get the project kicked off. And off the top of my head, I can't tell you what the date is for us to conclude, but we can come back with that information for you.
Ultimately, I don't need to know that number and I'm sure that someone does. I'm just like anxious for making sure that our results are fast enough to get qualified for some of that funding. So thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. That's a good point.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember, please. The, the RFP is out there right now and that's supposed to, at the end of early October, we should have our, the approval or the recommendation for, the approval of the contractor.
That kicks in the process.
That kicks in the process. And there is dates in it and I, but I'll let John answer the date side.
Okay. That's it for me.
Thank you, Mayor.
I think I'm, I'm up next. If you can go to the next slide, please. As a reminder, we encourage you to visit our webpage for regular opportunities to engage with the city and a list of projects in your neighborhood. Next slide. A couple of quick updates from engineering and transportation. First off, orange cone season is still underway, but crews are making really great progress. On 2100 South, crews are working hard to complete and reopen 2100 South to two lanes in each direction between 1100 and 1300 East by mid-November. Water and sewer line replacement will continue through winter between 1100 East and 700 East. Crews have also replaced curb, gutter, and sidewalk on the east side of Virginia Street up to 11th Ave and back down the west side to about 2nd Ave. Asphalt paving is planned for mid-September with speed cushion installation following through November. On 1100 East, crews are finishing concrete work to prepare for road paving in late September. Concrete curb, gutter, and sidewalk replacements have been completed on both sides of 1100 East between 900 South and 1300 East. And ADA ramps on both sides of the road are currently being repaired. Crews have also completed most ADA ramps, curbs, driveways between 500 West and 700 West. They'll continue upgrading curb ramps and performing concrete work on the south side of 600 West intersection and the north sides of 700 and 800 West blocks. Storm drains will work, storm drain work will close the south side of 600 West intersection for about two weeks to allow time for the work and concrete occurring, occurring to, before reopening. Crews will also work between 800 West and 1,000 West in 2025. Lastly, new pedestrian safety improvements, including two new mid-block crossings and asphalt repaving is now complete on the, the West Temple reconstruction. Crews are finishing final items like raising utilities, installing concrete manhole collars and, and resurping through mid-September. Next slide. Here's a preview of a few opportunities for constituents to come and meet with their district liaison. We've got our team out at a variety of community festivals and events. We invite you to come and talk to the Mayor's Outreach Team and engage with them on what's important to you in your neighborhood. Next slide. September is also filled with many fun festivals. I wanted to highlight just a couple on, on a broad list of events happening. The Artist Stroll at Cottonwood Park happening on the 12th, led by the Public Lands Event Team. Afro Utah Festival at Library Square on the 21st, and many of our annual favorites such as Avenue Street Fair, Ninth and Ninth Street Fair, In Groove in the Grove. That's it on my side.
Any questions before we move to the next slide? No, perfect. Okay, we can move to the next slide then. So this is just a quick update. Two weeks ago, we hosted Sundance for a site visit. They're in their RFP process, as you all know. A thank you to council members Lopez Chavez, Dugan, and Wharton for joining us for the kickoff breakfast for that. We showed the group of about 18 individuals some very exciting venues and spaces in Salt Lake City and we feel really proud of the visit that we conducted. Ours was the last visit of their site visit phase of their RFP and so we're hopeful to hear more soon, but we just wanted to provide a small update on that because, you know, you might be reading stuff in the news and wondering, so.
I just want to say thank you to the Mayor's Office. It was such a beautiful tour, very well planned, Visit Salt Lake also helped, and I believe some other organizations like Downtown Alliance, Equality Utah was involved. I got to learn and experience so much about the Film Festival and how our city is better suited to provide not just the hospitality, transportation needs, but the pedestrian needs of our downtown. So I'm really excited that amongst these conversations of capital improvements happening in, in our city and our downtown, that Sundance and these other programs see it as a vital opportunity to move their operations closer to our convention center and to our future entertainment districts. So thank you again. I'm super excited. A big takeaway of mine was our city was promoted and really excited for these actors, I should say, these actors have a lot of excitement to join our city because of our 100% HRC score. Our Harvey Milk Visibility Project was something we were able to highlight and our diverse council members was promoted as well, the diversity that we have and experience here in our city. So these are just some of our strengths and it felt, it was, it was a point of great pride for me to be able to share this and be a part of it. So thank you for.
Thank you. All right. If there are no other questions, we'll move on.
You can see the occupancy at the Resource Center still runs quite high, 97%, although down from 99% the last time we spoke. Most of that's actually in one center. So we said ups and flows in each of those centers based on a lot of factors. EIMs and Rapid Intervention Work, Sugar House area is probably the focus this week for EIM work, Hidden Hollow, that kind of area. And then the Rapid Intervention Teams will be primarily 17 South River Park, some west side areas. This year is a little unique in some ways in that we've actually had fewer large camps across the city than previously. And so a lot of smaller places disperse, there's a lot more movement of the teams across the city. Resource Fair this Friday at Library Square and then Kayak Court, which has moved to a more of a sort of centralized location, will be determined shortly, but I'm imagining somewhere around one of the Resource Centers this month. And then the Micro Shelter Community Move, if you haven't been over to 7th West, they are making a lot of progress. They are planning within this month to reopen that, so it's imminent. And then I'll say within the next six weeks, the winter shelter will start coming online. We're already at that point of the year. So usually mid-October, working on opening additional shelter beds and getting folks moved in there from unsheltered situations.
Thank you for that report. I just wanted to know, with the increase in shelter capacity, should we expect enforcement in some of our public spaces to help utilize the space?
It'll be a combination of things, I think, councilmember. Of course, enforcement of the no camping ordinance is a priority. We've seen this year a lot of folks who have not been setting up camps per se, but moving a lot around the city with their items. There'll be a lot of outreach towards those folks and in previous years, we've seen a lot of success getting folks into those resources voluntarily as soon as they're opened up. Now with that, we will have enforcement across all public spaces, including parks, Library Square, obviously, and Washington Square and those kind of places. So it'll be a combination of both those factors.
May I just follow up real quick to my colleague? Thank you. How many of these units will be, or these shelter spaces will be utilized during the daytime? There's obviously a difference between nighttime shelter and daytime capacity.
The plan this year has had, last year we planned on having 600 beds 24 hours a day, day and night, and then another 200 for Code Blue. That was last year. This year, the coalition in this state factored in a lot of things with point in time count and increased numbers. And the goal is 900 beds, which are 24/7, and then another 100 beds for Code Blue only. So 900 beds all day, all night through the winter time. And then Code Blue would be just the most, the lowest temperature nights and that'd be nighttime only, 100 beds.
Thank you. I just have two quick items. The first one related to the reopening of the micro shelter community. I'm just curious about how we as a city are administering those resources related to those who were previously accessing them to opening it up to like a new process. Can you just explain that?
Sure. So a number of individuals who were in the first phase were actually moved to temporary locations to stay during this interim time and they will be coming back. They've all been guaranteed their places back again. Now, there's a process right now that we work with, with the Operator Switchpoint and the Volunteers of America Outreach Teams to identify individuals who are higher risk. And so as soon as a unit opens up potentially, they have a coordination effort to get the right person into those units quickly. So if there is turnover, new folks will come, come in, but everybody, from my understanding, who were, was in there before, who wants to come back, can come back.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And the other item, just very quickly, so you were recently at one of the community churches that is in the Sugar House neighborhood and you gave a kind of talk to that community related to some of the challenges that we face with supporting individuals experiencing homelessness, but really also activating that community in terms of ways that they could engage and help. I just wanted to share the appreciation from that community who reached out and just said thank you. It was incredibly helpful to understand all the different moving pieces as well as opportunities for our residents to be involved. So thank you.
My pleasure. And just for the public, we do get invited to multiple locations, community groups, churches, community councils. We're always happy to go and visit with anybody, presentations or just question and answer periods to help understand the system itself, homelessness as a general kind of concept, and then to your point, ways that we can all engage to help and make this better.
Anything else? Thank you all so much. With that, we will move on to item number two, Driveway and Loading Area Standards Text Amendment. Brian Fulmer, Council Policy Analyst, is joining us, as well as Madison, is it Blodgett or Blodgett, Blodgett Principal Planner.
We're also joined by Amy Thompson, who's the Planning Manager. This is a proposal from the administration regarding driveway and loading area standards found in city, in the City Code Parking Chapter. Planning staff found that some standards created unintended consequences. They worked with the Transportation Division to correct the issues while addressing vehicular needs and support good urban design principles. With that, I'll turn it over to Madison.
So this is a request for council to consider the proposed text amendment that corrects the driveway and loading standards. And these proposed changes will fix issues with the current standards to adequately address the vehicular access needs and support good urban design. And the Planning Commission has recommended city council approve this proposal. If you want to go to the next slide, please. Next slide. Thank you. The proposed changes include modifying standards for driveway widths, distinguishing driveway and drive approach standards, and establish vehicle staging standards for garage doors. It includes changing the term loading area to loading facility and uniformly using that throughout the code and adding definitions for the terms driveway and drive approach. In addition, other related sections of 21A will be amended. Next slide, please. For the proposal details, next slide. So since the adoption of the new parking chapter, staff has identified that there are some issues with the driveway standards. And the first issue staff has identified is that the maximum combined driveway width standard. Under the current code, the maximum combined driveway width applies to the combined width of all the driveways on the property. And this has led to the number and size of driveways permitted to be inconsistent with the use and the size of the property. For example, manufacturing and industrial uses require larger driveways and are often uses, often these uses are on larger properties and that legislatively just needs more than one driveway. And this can be seen in the top image, which shows an example of how, under the current code, a corner lot in the manufacturing zone with a total of 600 feet of frontage would only be permitted a maximum of two curb cuts with a combined maximum width of 50 feet. And on this lot, on a lot like, on this size, in a zone that supports uses that could require large vehicles to access the lot, the current code does not adequately support those needs. So to address this issue, the proposal removes the standard of combined maximum driveway width and instead proposes to apply the width standards to each individual drive approach. Additionally, the proposal modifies a standard that regulates the number of curb cuts. Under the proposal, one curb cut is permitted for the first 100 feet of street frontage and one additional curb cut for every additional 250 feet of street frontage would be allowed. This bottom amendment shows how the proposed changes would apply to that same law as discussed above. As you can see, this lot would be allowed to have three curb cuts, each a maximum of 30 feet. And this change eliminates issues with the number and size of the driveway being inconsistent with the use and size of the property while still regulating the number and size of curb cuts. The second issue identified by staff is the applicability of the driveway width standards. In the current code, the standard specifically applies to the front and corner side yard. Some zone districts do not require a front or corner side yard. And because there isn't a required yard to apply the standards to, it could allow for unlimited width in these zones. To address this issue, the proposal applies the width standard to the drive approach. This ensures that the focus is on the approaches and their respective driveway width regardless of whether a zone has a required front or corner side yard. And a driveway's width will still be regulated and it's because the standard has been added that the driveway must match the drive approach. Third issue is that clarification is needed on what is considered a driveway versus access and how the standards apply to both. A driveway is vehicular access provided on private property while drive approach is in the right of way and provides access from the right of way to private property. So staff has defined driveway and drive approach and amended the language in the code to consistently use each term and apply the standard separately to each. Next slide. Staff has also found that there's been issues with the term loading and throughout the code, different terms are used in reference to loading such as area, berth, or dock. And this can cause confusion for understanding the code and administering the regulations. So to enhance clarity and consistency, the proposal revises the terminology to uniformly use the term loading facility throughout the code. Next slide. Next slide. So there are some considerations for council and for contacts. I'll provide a little background. So in the initial draft reviewed by the Planning Commission on March 27th, staff proposed eliminating the requirement to provide a loading facility, but maintain the loading facility standards if one is provided. Staff has found that the requirement for a loading facility has had a negative impact to building design. When presented to Planning Commission, they had concerns that removing the loading facility requirement would result in the street being used for loading ultimately blocking traffic. And they voted to table the proposal to give staff time to address their concerns. So staff has found that one of the main issues with the loading area requirement was actually the 14-foot vertical clearance requirement, specifically how that negatively impacted multifamily buildings' design. Specifically in buildings where the ground floor is less than 14 feet, it would lead to taller than average parking garage ceilings, consuming space that could otherwise be used by the principal use. To address this issue, the Planning Commission's and the Planning Commission's concerns, staff revised the proposal and reduced the vertical clearance requirement from 14 feet to nine feet just for multifamily uses. Since the intent of the loading facility for multifamily uses is for residents to move in and out of the building, this change was also consistent with staff's research with other cities and what their loading requirements were for multifamily uses and the vertical clearance requirement was less than what it was for commercial or industrial uses. The Planning Commission considered the revised proposal on the May 8th Planning Commission meeting and expressed, expressed concerns that the reduced nine-foot vertical clearance would not be enough to accommodate a moving truck. Ultimately, Planning Commission voted to forward a positive recommendation to adopt the text amendment, but recommended to keep the existing height requirements for loading facilities. Next slide, please. Additionally, Planning Commission recommended that the city council may want to consider the threshold for when a loading area is required for multifamily uses, such as changing the number of dwelling units that triggers the standards. So the existing standard is triggered when a development has 80 units or more and Planning Commission discussed the possibility of increasing that number. But raising the number of the units does not address the issues staff has identified with the impact design or the concerns with the street being used for loading. What was also discussed was potentially the mix of unit types such as like a studio, one bedroom, or a two-bedroom. But the unit type does not impact the need for loading. Whatever the size of the unit is, you'd still need to move furniture into it and that doesn't address any of the issues or concerns. And lastly, they discussed changing the standard to be based on the total area of the building as it is for other uses, but multi, but for multifamily, the number of units is a better measure of the loading needs as the size of units can vary. For example, a building with 102 bedroom units could be the same total area as a building with 300 studio units. And while the building area may be the same, the loading needs for the 300 unit building would actually be greater because the possibility of a resident moving in or out could be higher on any given day. Additionally, with staff research, other cities also use number of units as a threshold for loading requirements for multifamily uses. And again, changing this standard would not address the discussed issues or concerns. Ultimately, staff did not find any issues with the current threshold standards. Next slide. And finally, the recommendation from Planning Commission is for the city council to approve the zoning text amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, Councilwoman Young?
Thank you. So I just have a clarification question. So when we're talking about these changes related to driveway and drive approach, I'm making an assumption, but want to make sure I'm correct, that we've considered the needs related to public safety access. So our fire trucks can still get in and out even with this modification? Is that accurate?
Yeah, this is, other departments have been included in the original like drafting of the proposal.
Great. Thank you for that.
Council, anything else? All right. Thank you so much for your hard work.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to item number three, a resolution for the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. We'll invite Assistant Chief Robert Stafford, Division Chief Tyler Shepherd, and Jason Oldroyd, Senior City Attorney, to the table and we will turn the time over to you all.
Thank you for your time. Yeah, so today we're here to formally ask for your approval for the formal adoption and ultimate promulgation of our Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. We've had the opportunity to train with each of you and I know you've been kind of in the public safety building and had some opportunity to train and learn about what this plan entails. But now we, we had our last revision of this plan in August of '24. This was originally completed earlier this year in '24, but now we're on the, your agenda to, in order to actually promulgate it. And so kind of what this means is essentially officially adopt it with the city recorder and city attorney's office being present. It's, and this is a, a big deal. We're very proud of this plan. This is new for Salt Lake City. Historically, we had an emergency operations plan. This is just a more, more robust, bigger foundational plan that we need for moving forward in the future. The Fire Department adopted and kind of absorbed emergency The Fire Department adopted and kind of absorbed emergency management for Salt Lake City in 2021, and ever since then, we've had this mission to kind of make all of our plans, all of our preparation, how we respond to and recover from large disasters, large incidents, large events even, how we're better prepared for those types of things. And this plan is just essentially the framework for that, and the foundation for that. And then this plan additionally, not only kind of guides us in those things, it correlates with our continuity of operations plan that each department in the city has or will have in the near future, crisis communication plans, checklist for the policy group and for your group, city council, emergency group. So those are the types of things. It's all built off of this foundation. Additionally, the promulgation of this plan also kind of sets the foundation so we can receive funding in the future, not only grant funding for being better prepared and building more infrastructure as it pertains to emergency management, and being more resilient in the future for the city, but also for recovery funding for when something does happen. Even with emergency declarations, this plan kind of gives it a better foundation for that. So it kind of guides us in all those things, and it's a big deal for the city and a big step moving forward for the city in emergency management. So a little more details on the plan. I'm going to turn it over to Chief Shepherd, Emergency Manager.
Yeah, and we'll be pretty brief about this. Thank you all for the time. This is our comprehensive emergency management plan, or formerly an emergency operations plan. This is a large collaborative effort between all the jurisdictions in the county. So to give some context on why this plan is important, the federal government, FEMA, comes out with a comprehensive planning guide, CPG 101. And that outlines how we should develop our emergency operation plans. And then that funnels down to state, state codes, like the Emergency Management Act, and then into our city ordinances. So the county has been meeting for over a year to develop these comprehensive emergency management plans for each jurisdiction. So they're similar, but unique to Salt Lake City, and this is our unique Salt Lake City emergency management plan. And as Chief Stafford noted, when there is a major disaster, it's not isolated to Salt Lake City. So we're going to reach out to the county, who's going to reach out to the state, who's going to reach out to FEMA for assistance. And this guiding document determines or outlines how we should operate, and then again, is a requirement for us to acquire some kind of fundings, different funding sources from FEMA for different grants, and also reimbursements such as FEMA's public assistance or individual assistance when they come in after a disaster. So it's pretty basic, and an overview document. We have a lot of other planning documents that fall under the SEP, what we call the SEP is the comprehensive emergency management plan. And it goes over activation, so how we activate the plan, the response, how we respond to disasters, recovery, how we recover from, and then preparedness, which is how we prepare to mitigate and protect and harden our infrastructure. So while this is fairly brief, just know that this is the part that we're asking to get promulgated, to make official, then we can adopt that through the county, and it becomes our guiding document. And then all other plans, such as your emergency city council handbook, policy group handbooks, our mitigation plans, our threat and hazard assessments, all that fall under this. Yes?
Thank you for all this work. In the concept of operations, is there any preventative work by chance?
Yeah, so right now, we have a countywide hazard mitigation plan, and that was adopted in 2019. They're a five-year plan. We are currently starting the process with the entire county of the new hazard mitigation plan. And in there, we're working with all the jurisdictions, ourselves, public utilities, Jason from the attorney's office is going to be involved, and that is what our mitigation, where our mitigation plans fall.
Chair, may I ask a follow-up? Just in light of recent news that I take very seriously in lieu of the school shootings that's occurred, how does operational response to these activities fall under our purview? Or is that something that would be a policy discussion at all, as far as response? It's something that I worry about.
Absolutely.
Just today, two hours ago, was another school shooting.
Yep. So active shooter is on the forefront of everybody's mind. Active shooter is part of our, one of our hazards in the SEP. It's also one of our hazards in our hazard mitigation plan. Police and fire at the local county and state level all coordinate those active shooter responses and trainings. And then we have public awareness courses, such as our CRAZE course offered through PD. So absolutely, that is one of our threat and hazard identification areas. Yep. Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, so I just want to reflect also for the good of the public. So I think one of the things that everyone always pauses on is, if there's an emergency, do we have a plan? And as an individual resident, you're like, man, I hope my city has a plan, because there's only so much you can do specific to planning for your individual home, family, and your neighbors around you. My takeaway from spending time with you at the Public Safety Building, along with all of my fellow council members, was not only does the city have a plan, but we have multiple plans. And so for me, it just gave me a lot of reassurance related to knowing that you have proactively looked at all these different potential scenarios, and that you're collaborating across city departments and across government. So looking at, what does it mean for the city? What does it mean for the county? How are we working with the state, FEMA, all of those different components? And by putting that into writing, that just reduces the amount of time it takes for the city to respond in these instances, and reduces redundancy and waste of resource, so that we're really looking at, how do we get the best outcome possible as quickly as possible? I just have to say that as someone who often, before being on council, lived in that space of, man, I hope my city has a plan, I can say with confidence that you have developed an incredible plan for Salt Lake City, and I feel incredibly safe being here, knowing that you have spent the time and the resources to make this happen.
Thank you. And we'd like to make as many plans public as possible. There are some that are sensitive, but most of these, including the SEP, can be public-facing, and we want our communities to know what those plans are.
Before I allow my co-counselors to ask more questions or comment, is there more to your presentation?
No, that was it.
Okay. Councilmember Pui.
You know, thank you. And to echo the comments, right, it's impressive, the amount of work that you guys have put in, and even myself that have been involved, you know, and while we're another in government, sometimes I'm completely lost in who has authority over what, any given issue, and you are able to sort this out and plan, so we have that muscle memory, which is ultimately key in case of emergency. So I, one of the issues that happened in our county, fortunately not in our city, a couple of years ago, in Sandy, a good friendly, you know, good amazing city here in this valley with their water, highlighted the issue of communication to the neighbors directly, quickly. And it highlighted how many impediments there were to actually make public messages. I remember that moment, you know, they were scrambling at the last possible minute to have vehicles, city vehicles, drive through the neighborhoods with, you know, sharing a message about not drink the water, because it's toxic. You know, and I wonder if we have learned something from the cases like this, where we are managing public utilities? Hopefully, that never happens to us, and I'm sure that we have amazing safeguards to prevent such thing to happen in our city. But I, sometimes I'm worried about, how do we communicate individually to the hundreds of thousands of residents, even visitors, that we might not have information about? So do we have some plans or systems to address some of that?
Do you want to speak on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's actually in this plan, and we were able to utilize that the other day on the Sandhurst wildfire. So we are aware of what happened in Sandy. We actually are meeting with Sandy to go over what we did. It's called IPaaS, or the Integrated Public Alert and Warning System. It's a federal system, and that's where everybody got their, like amber alert-style alarms on their phones. And we're able to polygon that, a geographic location, and isolate it, and send out whatever messaging we have. We already have a crisis communication plan that outlines templates, so we don't have to come up with that messaging on the fly. We have that pre-programmed, and then we send those through our alerting authority at Salt Lake County Emergency Management. So that covers TV. That's where you get your emergency broadcast, on your televisions, on your radio, on your cellphones, your NOAA weather radios. That's where that goes. We also have, what the problem was in Sandy was reverse 911, and they didn't have enough opt-in people, so it only went to a few hundred or a few thousand people. That's where that problem was. The Integrated Public Alert Warning System bypasses that. There are, you know, going to be people that we don't always capture, you know, so there are redundancies, something like a door knock, but you don't want to rely on that. That's not our primary. So in this plan, it goes over, it goes over both our alerting system internally, and in the IPaaS system through our joint information center.
Councilmember Deegan?
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the plans, because I did a lot of planning at some stage in my life, in different things, and it's a great plan, but there's always that, how often are we training and exercising the plan? And, you know, when there's unintended consequences of something failing? And how often do you guys train it, and just kind of more for the public, when you train, and how you train with the other agencies besides just Salt Lake City?
Absolutely. So we have a training coordinator specialist, and their sole purpose is to train our plans. We do an annual plan of our comprehensive plan, so the next one's coming up in November, and that's a FEMA-directed plan. So FEMA's coming in, and we're coordinating with our jurisdiction, the hospital systems, the National Guard. And so that is an annual plan training, and we follow Homeland Security Exercise and Evaluation Planning Protocols and Procedures for that, and then we evaluate the plan, and then we update them. All our plans get updated on an annual basis, and the SEP specifically is rewritten every five years. So this plan will be good for five years. Along with that, we have many other plans, like Chief Stafford alluded to, our COOPS, our continuity of operations plans, our hazard mitigation plans. All those things get trained after they're developed and then adopted. So more than just the single time of year, but for this plan specifically, we train every single year.
Great. Thanks.
Councilmember Horton?
Hi. So I appreciate all of this, and of course, a big concern for me perpetually is fire, because of my district, and the Sand Run fire that we had this year, which way to go. That was like, I think, handled so well, and a lot of the people that were displaced from Sand Run were, and I don't think this was intentional, were asked to come down basically near my house. And so we were all kind of standing around in the, in the area, like looking at the response, and both I and the residents were so impressed with the work of our Fire Department, and then the work that we did having, you know, involving other jurisdictions. If it wasn't so scary, it was actually really cool to see, but in a very scary way. I want to make sure that this plan, we, I think we have been approved or are waiting for approval on funding that would allow us to update a comprehensive fire mitigation plan, and one that would be a lot more focused than previous plans on prevention. So I just want to make sure that there's nothing in here that will limit that, and that that is something that, once that's in place, it can plug right into what you've done here.
Yep, that's exactly it. This is an umbrella document.
Yeah.
And that's our community wildfire protection plan. And you're right, we did get a community wildfire defense grant to rewrite that. And our sole goal on that is to have a citywide wildfire, not just the benches, but the entire city, and have it comprehensive with mitigation plans and projects, so then we can get funding, you know, internally or externally, to mitigate wildfire potential. That's the plan, and we should be getting our word letter here fairly soon.
Great. Well, I mean, we've had a lot of emergencies that this city has weathered in recent years, and I appreciate and recognize that any one of them could come back. Yeah, fire makes me particularly worried, because that is one that we have every single year, I think. And usually, it's in District 3, so that's a big area of focus and concern for me. But thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you all so much. Let's hope we never have to use this plan.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We will now turn our attention to item number four, an informational session overviewing the draft for the Allen Park Adaptive Reuse and Management Plan. Allison Roland, Council Policy Analyst, is at the table, as well as Kat Andra, Public Lands Planner, and Tyler Murdock, Deputy Director of Public Lands.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an informational briefing on the Allen Park Draft Adaptive Reuse and Management Plan. The plan is intended as a guide for future uses to this property, which is Seven Acres, located on Seventh East, I think, I'm sorry, Thirteenth East. I think most of you are familiar with where it is. And the plan also includes plans for its arts, structures, and landscapes. The draft plan focuses mostly on Phase 1 of park improvements, and there will be additional phases determined later. Phase 1 work would be funded by the 4.5 million from the 2022 general obligation bond, and then another 500,000 from the city for Immigration Creek restoration. The transmittal provides estimates on components of the budgets, and those are summarized in Sections G and H of the staff report. And it also notes that high-end cost estimates may fall short of the existing budget of 5 million, and that would be by, it could be as much as a little over $1 million. The budget did include contingency amounts in these estimates, though, and they plan to refine the scope and the cost of improvements to remain within the budget. The department will also continue to explore grant, donation, and partnership opportunities. Ongoing funding for Allen Park... Sorry, I thought I lost my place. Ongoing funding for Allen Park would consist of both the operations and maintenance that are, that's being covered during, I'll get this right, that is being covered during the FY25 department budget, so it's within the FY25 department budget. And then at the completion of Phase 1, staffing and programming are expected to cost about $119,000 per year. The draft plan also provides guidance for implementation of future phases of capital, and the department states that the implementation of these phases, implementation of these phases, will depend on funding availability, along with any partnerships that are identified. And full realization of the vision in the plan is roughly estimated to cost $19 to $25 million. There are some policy questions, as usual, sprinkled in the report and listed at the end, and I will turn it over to Kat and Tyler.
Great. Thank you so much, and thank you, council members, for giving us time today to discuss the Allen Park Adaptive Reuse and Management Plan. My name's Kat Andra. I'm the planner and project manager over this project. Next slide, please. So Allen Park, as you probably all know, is one of the most unique public spaces that we have in Salt Lake City's public lands inventory. As a result, the Adaptive Reuse and Management Plan was created, which outlines future programming, capital improvements, and management for the site. The plan is based on several key inputs. The first is the cultural landscape report, which is a document completed in 2022, outlining the history of the site, and makes treatment recommendations for site improvements that maintain and celebrate the culture and history. The second is the project team was assisted by consultant GSBS Architects. We completed a precedent study of programming and management plans that were similar cultural landscape sites throughout the nation, and also completed preliminary assessments of the structures, the art features, and the landscape features to inform the plan. The team also looked at current adopted master plans to ensure this plan is in alignment with those. And finally, information gathered throughout a robust public engagement process carried out for about a year was the final input. Next slide, please. So the public engagement that was carried out is about a year-long process with three separate phases and kind of three broad goals. To build awareness of the site, to understand the community's priorities for the site, and to gather input from diverse audiences. Another key component of the overall process was a community advisory committee, and the committee's role here was to help implement the public engagement process, and ensure that what we learned as a city team from the process was appropriately reflected in the plan. The committee was comprised of representatives from various stakeholder and community groups with an interest in the future of the park. We also had a technical advisory committee with representatives from city departments and other agencies, who ensured that the plan that we proposed was actually implementable and viable, and can be carried out in compliance with all regulations and policies. And then, including the broad engagement efforts, we touched point with about 700 people during the process, and their input is, and feedback is reflected in the plan that you'll see today. And you can see all of the comments, the information gathered, and the materials in the appendix of the full draft document that you received. Next slide, please. The final preferred concepts, we're calling Art and Sciences in the Wild, and it was defined and confirmed through a public process that offered three pretty distinct options for the park's future. And the final concept, which you'll see in a moment, retains what was, what were the most important things from each of these three options, and then implements the community's vision of Allen Park, which is for Allen Park to be, quote, "an island of calm in the city that provides opportunities for relaxation, wildlife viewing, and enjoyment of Immigration Creek." This concept, you'll see, retains 10 of the 15 structures, 14 to 15. This concept you'll see retains 10 of the 15 structures, 14 to 15, celebrates the creek and natural habitat, improves access to and within the site, and celebrates Allen Park's history. Next slide, please. This is the final concept, Arts and Sciences in the Wild. It utilizes the retained structures, the retained 10 structures primarily for artist and science in residence programming, allowing local artists, craftsmen, and community organizations to share their trades and talents with the community. Select structures will also be used as park offices, maintenance buildings, and a restroom onsite, as well as a historical display to kind of outline the history of the site. The structures that are to be removed will be replaced with outdoor community gathering areas for passive park use and outdoor education. The plan also includes increased trails throughout the property and a trail connection to the east, which will connect the park to the citywide trail network, which was a goal of the acquisition of the park in 2020. It will add ADA parking at the entrance at 1300 East and additional bike racks throughout the park. Finally, we heard throughout every phase of the engagement process that the natural beauty of the site is one of the most beloved features. So the plan includes extensive improvements to Immigration Creek, the riparian corridor, and the floodplain restoration efforts, and then enhanced wildlife, habitat, and natural areas throughout the park. Next slide, please. In addition to the site plan, which is probably the highlight of the Adaptive Reuse and Management Plan, the final document also includes information about how we carried out the planning process, outcomes of the public engagement, and the site investigation processes, and includes phasing and funding recommendations, operations and maintenance plans, management recommendations, and a plan for future programming once the site is built out. There are also strategies listed to pursue potential local and national listings as a historic landmark site. Next slide, please. The plan also anticipates additional programming and staffing costs for the park as elements come online, like Allison mentioned. The staffing costs here are based on the first phase of capital improvements being completed. Upon the full buildout of the concept plan, which is anticipated to take several years, additional costs will have to be assessed. These costs here are based on a review of staffing recommendations for other parks, as well as an understanding of this park in the context of the overall park system. We are anticipating staffing costs of approximately $64,000 for that first year after Phase One is complete. Programming costs of approximately 55,000, with 30,000 of those being one-time expenditures for planning and program development. And then please just note also that these costs on the screen do not include anticipated maintenance and operation costs once Phase One is complete. As additional investments are made within the park, ongoing operations and maintenance costs will accompany those and will have to be determined during the detailed design phases of improvements. And when we know more about what those maintenance requirements of those improvements will be specifically. Next slide, please.
Can you quickly differentiate for us between park ranger and park attendants? Are the attendants doing like maintenance of green spaces, I'm imagining?
Yeah, that's a great question. Park rangers are the traditional kind of park rangers that you see in our parks today. Additional capacity will be required to kind of expand to Allen Park. And then the park, what was the word, the, the other line, attendants, is anticipated to be more of an interpretive staff. There are some recommendations and implications for full-time security and what security will look like on the site over the long term. And so this is kind of an assurance to have eyes in Allen Park with those additional kind of structures posing other things that we don't have in our other parks, to kind of just have an additional layer of eyes and ears on the park. Manage the public spaces that are inside and outside of structures, kind of can also provide some interpretive elements within the park.
So we don't have on that anyone who like cuts the grass and removes the dead tree limbs accounted for?
That's correct. We do have current maintenance funding for the park as it is right now, which includes those types of things. Yeah, landscape maintenance, but as we kind of make improvements and invest more in capital improvements on those landscapes, there will be kind of an added requirement for additional maintenance and that is not included in these tables. Great questions. Okay, amazing, Phase One improvements, you're already ahead of me. So upon finalization of this plan, Public Lands will be advertising for a consultant to complete Phase One of improvements, the design for that. The total budget for this is approximately 5 million, as Allison mentioned, and this comes from the General Obligation Bond and supporting funding from Public Utilities for Immigration Creek. Improvements for this phase prioritize improving the visitor experience, improving the landscape that park visitors can access, and improving the park's natural and cultural resources from future degradation. Projects specifically include improvements to the primary and secondary trail system, removal of the unsafe structures with replacement as outdoor gathering areas, ADA and bike parking, wildlife and riparian habitat restoration, and then removal of a culvert currently in Immigration Creek and replacement with a pedestrian bridge, and then stabilization of the art elements throughout the park. And then, kind of touched on this, but due to the sensitivity and unique nature of the site, the plan does provide a range for the cost estimates of these improvements. So during the design phase, we'll be able to more accurately estimate what the cost of these improvements will be and we can tailor the design to the allocated budget as best as possible. And Public Lands will be continuing to pursue external funding sources and programming partnership opportunities to complete these additional elements in the preferred plan. We do recognize that implementing this plan successfully will require some very robust public-private partnerships and so that's kind of at the forefront of our minds as we're working through this first phase of improvements. And we are looking at facilitating those at other parks throughout the city as well. Next slide, please. Just really quick to touch on some next steps, we are accepting comments from the public on the final draft plan and concept until September 23rd. At that point, we will plan on incorporating the applicable comments and finalize the document and make it available on our website. Later in the fall, we'll begin solicitations for our design consultant to begin on Phase One improvements with construction anticipated for 2026. And in the meantime, we'll be completing some urgent property repairs and continue to pursue external funding and partnership opportunities for the additional phases. And next slide, I think that is it. So thank you so much for your time and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Councilwoman Young.
Yes. Okay, so I have a few. So first and foremost, I just have to thank all the staff, but especially Kat. I am pretty sure I have not been to any event that is community-oriented in District Seven that she has not been at, related to making sure that folks had an opportunity to give input to this plan. So really above and beyond and definitely one of those successful community engagement efforts. And so just very grateful that whether it was during a windstorm or late at night on a weekend, like you were there for all of it. So thank you, Kat. As we look forward, I, things that I really like, I appreciate that you found a middle ground when this process started. I think we had such a diverse community view in terms of save all the buildings, take away all the buildings, and like everything in between. So I really appreciate that the engagement created more consensus amongst the community members and I completely see that reflected in the plan. I also really like that Phase One is focused on being able to get this park to an operational place. So that is really important, I think, to everyone is being able to say, how do we move it into a space where our residents can more regularly enjoy it, even though we may have future development visions that go beyond that, starting with that basic expectation of let's just get the doors open, related to that access piece. I love that and I think that that's a great first step. I think one of the things that I still would like to just see maybe a little more information or have a little more dialogue on is going to be related to how we're looking at programming needs and comparing that to the maintenance and/or security needs. So this is just a key area where we know that just due to the absolute like environmental aspects that we love about Allen Park, it also creates a ton of challenges related to being able to regularly monitor and make sure that folks who are using it feel safe and aren't running into, you know, some of the issues that we see in our other public parks. So I think that there could be some more opportunity to look at budget related to how we're, you know, trying to address some of those components as opposed to what appears to be kind of a heavy lean towards programming. How do we balance that just a little bit more effectively? And then I think the last component that I just want to address is that I appreciate that there was a lot of questions about parking and a lot of feelings about it. So I do think that you guys have found a really great solution related to how do we maximize accessibility from the limited off-street on 1300 East, but also recognizing that there are surrounding, you know, neighborhoods and opportunities to be able to park, whether that be at some of our neighborhood partners like Westminster and others, to be able to enjoy that facility without taking up a large space to be able to facilitate a parking lot. So thank you for the opportunity to share that feedback and again, great work. I appreciate how far this project has come.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Counsel, anyone else? I think it's really exciting to see a, a plan coming together. I am deeply concerned about making sure that once we commit to this plan, we're also committing to securing those financial resources and not letting it languish. I know there's a lot of demands on this department in particular and so I look forward to digging deep with you all to make sure that this maintains its proper sequencing and priorities and doesn't get overlooked, so. All right, thank you all so much.
So much.
Do we have Jane Kim online yet, any chance? Counsel, if you don't mind, since the appointment to the Sister Cities Board is a little time-bound, can we wait a moment on the budget amendment and allow Ms. Kim to introduce herself now? All right, Ms. Kim, thank you for joining us. Typically-
Hi, thank you for having me.
Typically, we give nominees for board appointments a chance to just introduce themselves, just a minute or two, telling us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving the city in this capacity.
Sure, yeah. As I said, my name is Jane Kim and I have lived in Salt Lake City for 14 years now. And I have to admit, when we first moved here from Boston, I came kicking and screaming, really unsure of where we were moving to. And having lived here for 14 years now, I feel like I'm Salt Lake's biggest ambassador. In fact, my neighbors, when we lived in Florida, ended up moving here because of the pictures and lifestyle of mountain and skiing and hiking, biking, all the things that they saw on my Instagram. So in any case, I have been raising two children who just recently graduated from West High. We raised our two kids here and I've loved living in this community. I feel like I would love to be a part of Salt Lake's Sister City Program because of, I could represent a different type of community here. I know the Asian community is growing here in Salt Lake. I have also served as, on a Fulbright in Korea for two years. So I was an ambassador between Korea and the US in my early twenties and loved that experience. And my background is in education. I taught high school, history, and psychology and I just feel like all of my, I guess, skills and passions and things that I just naturally loved to do would work well with the Sister City Program.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Counsel.
Yeah.
Any comments? Ms. Kim, we are keenly aware that when our neighbors do this kind of work, it's voluntary and it's a sacrifice and so we appreciate people like you, being willing to give that time and energy and especially to this program that we all really love and, and hope to see grow. So on the next formal meeting, you will be on the consent agenda. You don't need to be present. And once we vote to approve you, then your term of service will begin. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, have a good evening.
Okay, you too.
All right, Counsel, with that, we can now turn our attention to the fifth item on the agenda, which is an ordinance for budget amendment number one for fiscal year 2425 follow-up. We have 20 minutes allocated for this on our agenda. Ben Litke, Council Policy Analyst, is joining us. I see Greg Queery, the Budget Director, is here and hopefully Mary Beth Thompson, Chief Financial Officer, joins us in a few. Ben, is 20 minutes enough? You feeling good about that?
I can do it in less.
Yes, I love those words. Ben, I'm turning the time over to you.
A quick update on the council-added item I1. This is the $505,000 for North Temple Tree Replacements and Landscaping. The council asked to confirm that that is enough to fully fund the public commitment of replacing two trees for every one tree that died from the inadvertent herbicide spray. The Public Lands Department has confirmed that is enough funding. They have requested flexibility to spend it over multiple fiscal years by placing it into a tree loss mitigation fund. That is a special fund because it does not lapse to fund balance at the end of the fiscal year. The 440 trees in total that would need to be planted to meet that public commitment, 220 would be directly on North Temple. Those are the ones that were killed. There would be 220 additional trees that would not be on North Temple, but would be in the surrounding neighborhood. So side streets, urban trails, things like that. And this is because there's limited space available on the North Temple corridor itself. You would probably have to tear up existing infrastructure to create new spaces for that.
Counsel? Councilwoman Quay?
Yeah, quick question. It's encouraging to see that the plan is moving forward and it's a good plan. To the, to the point on that the additional trees will be placed in the surrounding areas, I want to ask a follow-up question to that regarding the plan, the mayor's plan and the administration's plan to plant a thousand trees on the West Side every year. I want to make sure that these are not convoluted with that plan because this is to me a separate commitment to my community and I want to make sure that we stand up to, to that. And again, the more, the merrier, right? Ultimately, I think everybody agrees that we need more trees on the West Side and I think that the additional commitment will be, clarification will be important to my community.
Okay.
And I'll just seek additional clarification. It's programmatic, not budgetary, just to clearly communicate to our neighbors' expectations so that they don't expect 440 in the next 365 days. All right, do we need to do anything about that?
Nope. The, the vote for the remaining items is scheduled for next Tuesday, the 17th, at the West Side Meeting. Can we get the table on page 13 up on the screen? This is a request for one-time funding for new public lands assets that will need maintenance as well as expanding the complaint-based weed abatement service. So the top of the table totals $329,000 and this is one-time funding from the quarter cent sales tax for transportation. You'll see some of those are not constructed yet. They're anticipated to be finished next month. The lower half of the table is almost $143,000 and that would be pulled from general fund balance. Most of that $100,000 is to expand the complaint-based weed abatement. So that's an existing city function that would be expanded with this one-time funding.
So this is a new fund, though we haven't had this before?
I believe $50,000 was the funding level and I think it's been flat for a number of years. So this would be one-time funding. You would need to add funding in the next annual budget to make this an ongoing expanded service level.
Thank you. Clearly you hear in District One, this is a problem. Councilwoman Young?
Yeah, no, I would support this. I would also say that this is probably one of the number one issues that I hear from residents that then I repeatedly hear about in terms of follow-up, just because the city doesn't necessarily have a dedicated resource of enough extent to be able to address that piece. So I really appreciate the opportunity to put additional resources to that so that once a resident reaches out, we can put them on a schedule as opposed to, well, we'll try and get to it and then have them come back six months later saying they still haven't heard anything. So thank you.
And I do want to emphasize that this is all one-time funding. The capital asset planning team in the Finance Department is taking a larger look at all of the unfunded maintenance needs for general fund assets. So that's something that would come back to you with a more holistic recommendation about how to fund those ongoing needs with ongoing funding. So this is just one small part of that much bigger need.
My nerdy heart is so happy to hear that.
I'm going to skip past the next few items since they are re-appropriations. These are items that you originally approved last fiscal year in various funds. They were not spent or encumbered by the end of the fiscal year, so they lapsed. Some of these were in Public Utilities Enterprise Funds- Some of these were in public utilities, enterprise funds, so they have their own fund balances. Some of them are in the general fund. All of these are re-appropriating them for the original use and scope, since the funding is still needed. Item D16, uh, this is $100,000. It's a one-time contribution from Roland Hall. And this is for traffic calming and pedestrian safety improvements on Sunnyside Avenue, uh, in front of their campus. The specific improvements are to be determined. And this funding could be combined with future CIP funding for traffic calming on Sunnyside Avenue. But this item before you is part of a development agreement to accept the funding, where the specific uses are to be determined.
Can I ask a question, Chair? So, once, I appreciate it's future-facing. I'm just making, um, I guess, a general-to-the-universe request that as we look at those traffic calming solutions, it would be great if we also considered the needs of the new University of Utah baseball field related to that traffic calming component, as well as the Salt Lake, um, rec center facilities. Like, if we can just consider all of those items together, um, I think that that would be a benefit to coordination across that road.
Thank you, because I'm part of all these discussions here on Sunnyside. And, uh, and, uh, I think we'll, that is part of this whole idea, is crossing Sunnyside from where there's a bus station on 900 South, and they kind of cross Sunnyside at this spot because it's, they don't want to walk the 100 yards down to the light, so they jaywalk there. So, very valid point, and we can bring that up. So, absolutely, thank you very much. I'm responding for the admin because I'm part of those discussions. So, thanks. And I appreciate these, these fundings here because Sunnyside is, uh, is a lot of traffic, and we have a lot of schools. We have the university, we have the autism school, we have Roland Hall, and a lot of neighbors. And it's, as anyone knows, it's a lot easier to jaywalk than go to the light. And, uh, students love to do that. We're trying to prevent that. So, thank you.
Uh, we can take down the table from the screen. Uh, the last item I wanted to point out, uh, this is the annual funding from the Homeless Shelter Cities Mitigation State Grant. It is $2.9 million. That is 161,000 less than last year. However, the number of FTEs that are supported by the grant is increasing to 24. Four of them are new. This includes one police lieutenant and three regular patrol police officers. Of those 24, most, but not all, are fully funded by this grant. There's also a smaller sub-award to the VOA, the Volunteers of America. So, this is a significant funding source, even at the slightly lower amount for the Police Department. It's equivalent to about 2.5% of the total Police Department budget. Their total budget is $120 million. There is a follow-up item that may come to the Counsel. Previous years, this grant paid for ongoing equipment that the police officers use. That funding is not covered by the grant this fiscal year. That could be up to $660,000. So, that would need to be funded from another source, likely the general fund. The request is not included in this budget amendment. The administration is looking, looking into whether existing budgets could absorb some of those costs or if there are alternative sources. But I wanted to flag that ongoing cost being shifted away from the grant onto the general fund.
Have we raised this with our federal lobby to see if there's any opportunity to draw down federal money to assist with this?
Uh, I don't know.
I would really like us to be proactive in doing that, please. Counsel, any other? Counselmember point?
Thank you, I'm Chair. I, the, regarding this, this item, um, what is the, I would like to ask the administration, uh, the timeline, what, you know, when, when do we need to act fast to make sure that, you know, officers have the equipment that they need to perform their duty? So, uh, at what point do we need to wait for, you know, other funding sources? Or we need to start allocating some funding or get it going? So, I would like to know what that moment is, uh, to instill maybe in us a sense of urgency.
Counsel? Alright, looks like-
Those were all the items I wanted to highlight. Um, there are still a couple placeholders for Counsel-added items. So, because additional time is needed, uh, to gather those options and costs, those would not be listed for adoption next Tuesday when you vote on most of the remaining items.
Thank you so much. Alright. And Counsel, with that, we're back on track for time. So, thank you. Way to go on recouping that with me. Alright, so we've already done our board appointment, so we will now move on to item number seven, which is a Counsel Discussion on Compensation Follow-Up. So, I'm gonna make a few disclaimers, that I know it's listed as Counsel Compensation. But really, what we have undertaken together as a Counsel is reviewing the ordinance that governs Counsel Compensation. And it's turned into, I, I thought it was going to be a much simpler scope, but after learning the intricacies, I am committed to making sure that we get the ordinance as right as we can at this point in time for protecting what city constituents can expect of us and what people assuming this position can expect from the position. I don't feel prepared at this time to offer anything substantive because every time I think I'm getting close to a policy position, I'm introduced with new information that causes me to go, I need to be more deliberative on this before I push out bad information or push out something that's a false expectation or step into a gray area that would not be beneficial to the city as a whole. I want to open the floor to any of you to give comment. At this time, if you feel compelled to, there is no obligation for anyone to say anything. Um, I just want to make sure the constituents understand, this is not a secretive process. It is just simply that the ordinance is more complex and deeper than we thought. Um, with that, I would just ask if you do speak that you represent your position as there is no consensus at the moment that's emerged. So, I'll, with that, I'll open the floor to anyone who feels compelled to add anything. Counselmember Mono?
Sure, I'll, I'll bite at your invitation, um, partially because I've already talked about this publicly. So, I feel like, um, this is something that's important to me. We've, uh, what, I, when you mentioned the, the ordinance, I, I believe you're talking about the ordinance that was adopted six or eight years ago that attaches the Counsel Compensation, sets it at 25% of the mayor's compensation, which I believe was done against six or, six or so years ago, right? Go ahead.
Ordinance, yes. Principal, longstanding.
Right, and, and that basically codified what? Where the Counsel, when the city changed to this format of government, was originally set at 25% of what the mayor was at the time. That had slowly eroded over time, so the Counsel went and, and reset that. I think that is, so, those of you following along, that, that sort of, um, is the change that happened to the mayor's salary and the general budget. It made it so that there was a change to Counsel Compensation. Um, but that also brought up questions, po, policy questions for me of what is the responsibilities of a Counsel member? Who is capable of being, being able to serve on the city council? Um, and making sure that we're creating a structure, a city, that it, that can be led by, uh, the, the broadest and most, um, sort of diverse set of people that represent our community. Um, and looking at a lot of cities in, most cities, I would say, other than us, you really can hold down pretty much any job and, and serve on the city council with the demands of, for us as a, as a capital city. The way that I had been framing it or thinking about it in my mind was, look, we, we really have, you know, we're here all day Tuesday. I don't think that any of us are only spending Tuesdays. I think we all have at least one or multiple days, uh, throughout the week that we're all, we'll, we're all, um, doing different meetings. And so, that makes it really hard for us to, um, do this unless we're, you know, a lot of us are small business owners or we, other Counsel members that have, you know, served. It takes a level of privilege, I think, to be able to rearrange your lifestyle in order to do this. I acknowledge that I have some privileges that have allowed me to do this, but I don't want that to be a prerequisite to serving in this capacity. And so, that's the, the framework that I had been looking at of, of saying, look, we really can't serve, you really can't be in this position and have most full-time jobs. Now, the information, since I made those sort of public statements, that we've, we've learned is that, at, at the time, I thought, well, you know, we can't become a full-time Counsel unless we take it to the voters. What we've learned is that actually in state statute, that even that isn't an option. So, we don't even have, there's not a format of government that's approved in state law that would allow us to do that. So, that's significantly different information than the first time I, I, I sort of shared this and I shared it again with my constituents at, at my town hall. So, um, that's changed a lot, but I, I think the policy discussion as a community and as, and I, I think the same goes for, um, other elected, elected positions at the state level as well as, is, for me, it feels, um, like the responsibilities of our office are such that it makes it very difficult, I think, to serve unless you have that flexibility. I, I own my own business, so that, that makes it possible for me to rearrange my schedule, but not many people have that luxury. So, um, I guess I'll just state that again because I think, you know, we've had this, this noticed in our agenda for a couple meetings now. I just want to share my feelings on that. Still remain the same, but the information that I now have about the, the state law and the legal structure means that I don't think we're gonna be able to do what I was hoping to do with, um, this, at least not at this time. So, the first step, looking at that ordinance, uh, that was created, but also looking at different ways, that this conversation and this can be evaluated and setting some of those, of some of those parameters so that this can, this decision in future years, as, you know, things will continue to change, that there's some policy, uh, parameter set up. I kind of rambled at that, but I, I, I feel like, um, maybe that's a good summary for the public of where we're at.
Thank you, Counselmember Mono. Um, I do want to thank my co-counselors for being willing to take this on. We started the year with legislative session, which is always an intense time for us. We went straight into NHL negotiations that conflated with budget, which is our next busiest seat session. We spent the first half of this year at a breakneck pace that I don't, the city has never witnessed. And so, for you all to be willing to come back and deal with zoning consolidations and council pay ordinances, I'm really proud that even though this is probably the hardest policy debate we've had internally since ADUs, that we're still willing to have it because it really is pivotal to making sure that this branch of our government is ready to handle what we know is coming for it, at least over the next decade and likely beyond. Counselmember Warren, I see your lights on.
Yes, thank you. Um, yeah, I think we've passed ADUs at this point, um, quite a while ago, actually. So, I'm, uh, gonna try to be brief, um, but I'm gonna try to comp, explain where I'm at. Um, so we've been discussing this issue one-on-one or in small groups for over a year. And, uh, like some, like many of the issues, I would say, that have divided the Counsel, I believe that, um, this is another instance of where we agree broadly on what the goal is and where we want to arrive, but where we are disagreeing very strongly on how to arrive at that goal. Um, and that's, I think, I see a lot of overlaps with the ADU discussion, um, because of that. But I believe all of us wants the same, um, outcome, which is that we want to broaden the opportunity for as many people as possible to be able to run for, uh, Salt Lake City Council, um, or Mayor and to have the best possible cross-section of residents represent the diverse population that we serve. Each one of us knows that representation matters. Each one of us is committed to advancing principles of justice and equality to the fullest extents po, uh, possible during our time here. Uh, there are things that I heard from my colleagues during this discussion, um, that challenged my initial response on the topic, that the social equity concerns were not being fully heard, that this issue implicates systemic inequality, privilege, race, class, and family status more than I initially realized. And, uh, even feeling as though personal motives were being called into question, which I regret, um, that that happened. And then, uh, I want people to know that those, all of those things have caused me, um, to reflect more deeply because I know how much all of those things matter to me, um, both personally and professionally. Um, what I've struggled with on this issue is, uh, reconciling how we can all share the same genuine goal and at the same time differ so fervently in the way to achieve it. And I think I finally came to that realization, thinking all through all of this over many sleepless nights. So, broadly-defined equity concerns what is fair, impartial, and, uh, what is free from bias. We had a Stanford Law Review article that was shared with all of us recently, and that really helped me understand where my gut reaction was coming from. And it's not the social equity component in any way. It's the process itself and the how compensation is determined that I think needs refining. And as the article points out, that that is a struggle that's happening nationwide. When I initially heard equity as a principle characterized in a way that made me feel that it assumed a predetermined conclusion in the discussion, that caused me a lot of concern. And that's why I've been so opposed to moving forward with additional compensation beyond what we currently receive. We and our city council staff have done our best to try to create a framework for this discussion. But despite those efforts, we, I think, have to admit that our data is unstandardized, self-reported, and inherently subjective because of the very personal nature of the topic. What I want my colleagues and the public to hear is that I agree that our current ordinance, um, and process for addressing this issue is inadequate. I agree that any new system must account for considerations like privilege, race, class, family status, and other factors that contribute to systemic inequality. And I acknowledge that there may be burdens that we as a Counsel are shouldering that, um, may be inequitable currently. At the same time, because we are elected officials and also simultaneously city employees, I believe, um, equity in this context also compels us to consider where our compensation fits within the context of what our residents are experiencing, um, such as an average cost of living and different income data points for, from residents, uh, the full-time benefits that we receive in addition to our base salary, compensation for, and the ways that we determine compensation for city employees, our relationship with our recognized labor, and how our compensation compares to other elected officials, and the level of staff support that we receive to help us meet the demands of the job and the citizen legislature, legislator concept that is const in Utah's current law. So, my proposal is that, um, and I don't have a lot of specifics, but broadly, my proposal is that we replace the current ordinance with a group of residents that would consider all of these factors. Um, and that we do this by adding, either to, either by adding to the responsibilities of the Citizen Compensation Advisory Commission or by forming a new body, whichever we deem is more appropriate and, um, to meet these needs. As we've heard, there are very real risks to moving forward with any compensation increases right now, um, based on the data we have. We could very well end up in a situation where we have less of an ability to control this issue on our own terms in the future. On top of that, there are real costs, I believe, to our credibility in the eyes of our employees, other elected officials, and most importantly, our residents. Now, more than ever, um, important policy ideals that we share are under attack. And if we want to withstand those attacks, we have to be able to prove, like we have with our other equity in the city, that, um, our process and our policy outcomes are producing better results, not only for the eight of us that are elected in City Hall, but also for the residents that we- not only for the eight of us that are elected in City Hall, but also for the residents that we represent. I'm convinced that a clearer, more objective public process led by a group of well-informed residents will bear out not only what is appropriate, but what is equitable. And this is what we need to start building, I think, today. I know this significantly enlarges the timeline beyond what any of us wanted, but it's, it's what important matters like this deserve for us and for future elected officials for Salt Lake City.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counsel member Pu. Your microphone.
I, you know, I think this, I, I'm very thankful that these conversations are happening now. And I learn a lot from your point of view, council member Wharton, just now. So it's, it's, it's amazing that after, you know, quite a year of, of having these conversations that I, I'm learning about this right now, and I appreciate that you, you know, you stating your point. It is, it is definitely a charged conversation. And I, you know, and I, I understand why some of these conversations could be taken personal. But I, I want to make sure that none of my comments now are taken impersonal by anybody here. When, when talking about equity, I think we're willing to, I'm willing to personally force the conversation. Equity, I'm funding equity on, on, on compensation, on, on serving on a board like this, on serving the residents of my district, or serving all of us in the council. It's, it takes work and it's not easy, and it will require a sense of courage and a sense of pushing to try to understand each other and what our own, our own, you know, sometimes our blinders, what blinders we all have. Sometimes I felt like we've been hiding behind the boogeyman for political, just trying to prevent political backlash. Achieving equity isn't easy, and it will never, sometimes it's even, it's not even cheap. You know, our city commits to equity and, you know, financially too, right? Like we don't only put it on our titles, but we certainly create, try to create processes to, to, to your point. You know, but equity is never going to be served on a platter. It takes courage and it takes these conversations. Unfortunately, you know, I have been met with, you know, roadblocks after roadblocks when starting this conversation. I, you know, it, it is good to see that we are willing to, and we share some goals. I didn't feel like we did before. I, as a council member of color, I stand strongly on this issue. I, I, I feel like there is a fight to be had on this. I think fi- fighting racially motivated laws, sometimes they're not created, you know, knowingly and how they affect, how they affect people of color or the diverse backgrounds or and recognizing that we're bringing these issues and trying to find something that is ethical, that is transparent, that brings this issue to the public and finding some commonality on places that we agree is what my motivation has been, and many of us motivations has been when raising this issue. I, I recognize that I also have privilege, many, much so. I, if I didn't have my other job, I wouldn't be able to serve in this position. And because I have my other job and I, fortunately, I'm my own boss, I was able to hire people to help me do my other job so I could serve on the council. And I am not here to complain about all the decisions I made. I, I will stand by those and I will do them again. And even, even if it's to the detriment of my own finances because I care about what I do in my city and in my district. Finding these policy implications and finding, you know, I, and sometimes we weigh these, these conversations about what would others say, you know, versus waiting it by, is it the right thing to do? And sometimes we might be worried about our, our election campaigns. And, and all of these are political implications that are real, you know, and I, I understand. I, you know, I'm also, you know, an elected official. I, you know, I am willing to take, you know, have the courage to further equity, to further these conversations, to share a common goal, to make sure that this, this position is not only reserved for those that have the opportunity to have their own businesses or that they have the opportunities to, to pay themselves in some other way, to be able to, to serve their communities. And I, I know every single one of you. I know every single one of you, and I know that your heart is in the city, that you care about your residents, that you care about each other. I actually believe so much so. You know, that we are, you know, brothers and sisters in some way, you know, like we're family. And we disagree sometimes, as families do, that, that we are here to serve and that none of these conversations have been driven by, by a desire to hurt, at least certainly from my side, to hurt other people, but to actually further equity, to make sure that we are courageous enough, like we are courageous in other pieces, in other parts of the city. My community required of me, without telling me so bluntly, but they did, they required a council member that was active, a council member that showed up, a council member that was present, and that, you know, there was a voice for them. Many of them don't speak the language, many of them don't know the processes, and I felt like I needed to be present. And my district required of a council member that has the time and is no, just trying to put bread on their table versus serving their community and, and having this fight in their mind. I am willing to keep on this conversation and I'm hoping that we can keep talking about this to find the equitable goal, this transparent process that makes sure that this is a place where anybody is welcome to serve regardless of their background, regardless of their place of birth, regardless of, of their language, regardless of their income levels, and their education. I, I think that we all, I agree, share that common goal. And I'm sure that we're gonna find a path forward to, to find a common ground on this.
Thank you, council member. Alright, councilwoman Young, I see your light.
I'm gonna be brief. So, in my experience here at council, we tackle tough issues. Usually, in my experience, the way that we do that is that there's a legislative intent. And then once we have that intent, through conversation, we arrive at a proposal. That is what I want. I would like to have a tangible proposal that not just council members, but also the greater public can weigh in on before we move forward on any additional conversations. I have lots of feelings on the topics, as I know you all know because I've expressed them. As a part of that, though, I do not wish to express those without having to tie it to something of action. And so that is my desire as a councilperson, is to see a proposal and to have that proposal be widely shared so that folks can weigh in so that then we can have a productive conversation about next steps. Thank you.
Council member Dugan, I guess we're all going. We all started with nothing. I should have just closed it out.
So I appreciate the conversation, and I look back at all the information the staffs have provided us. Incredible information. They spend an inordinate amount of time talking about or researching and providing us as unbiased as they can data for our compensation conversation. So my appreciation goes out to both the administrations and our attorney's office, Jennifer and the staff in doing all that. And we've gotten a host of information from across the United States. We had an article that was given to us last night, and we all read it, and it was not a short article. It was a lengthy article. It was deep. It kind of hit on a bunch of the points. We're like, oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Okay, that's a good idea. I like that one. And it really kind of exemplified the complexity of this issue. And it, and it gave me thought that said, okay, I'll, I have that, and I'm gonna go back to be blunt right now. My first statement is, I believe we are appropriately compensated this time, period. Because we set that in motion, we made a decision, and my gut says we're appropriately compensated. What is that based on? It's based on my gut. It's like, ah, I've looked at all this information and I balance it here. But you can't, I mean, that's not a good policy. That's, that's, that's my bias, Dan Dugan's bias. There's seven different biases here. There's twenty-five in the room. There's twenty, twenty-five different biases here. And, and the seven of us can't make it a unbiased decision on our own and agree on that. So I'm, I'm, and I love, of course, council member Wharton so eloquently lays this all out for us. And I really appreciate what he laid out for us because mine was a lot simpler. I was like, hey, give it to HR, give them the, tell us what we want and have them recommend how to approach, how to come up with a proposal. And I think councilman Wharton was a little bit more eloquent in, in, in laying that out. But it's too difficult for us to do that and to have a legal and a, and a political basis to stand on. We would be going around and around forever. And I think we need to allow someone outside of us, and that was even one of the ideas, but even there was pros and cons in that, in that article we read last night. So that, that's what I'm standing for because I, I see we are appropriately compensated. We have done a lot in the recent history. An extra liaison officers, we've got extra communication staff to help us with our demand. But there's also probably things that I'm missing. And I want to, I want to look at that. But I also kind of agree with councilwoman Young is that, hey, let's have a, a method to get to this compensation level, which we don't have right now because right now we're just based on twenty-five percent of the mayor's pay, period, and, and the story. And I, that may be right, that may be wrong. I just don't know. And that's, for me, right now, that's appropriate until we come up with a reason, a better, a better solution, a better process.
Councilwoman Lopez Travis?
Thank you. I'll keep my comments very brief, and thank you to the subjective comments that everyone made. You know, really, I'm just committed to this process, I think, in, when I think of future cohorts and the future inheritors of the city that will be far younger than me as we pass on this baton, to give them the equitable opportunity to serve in our positions and to give them the best chance of success. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for speaking concisely and to the facts and representing your viewpoint. I think councilwoman Young, you are exactly correct. And I think we've put this on the agenda going surely after this much discussion, this much interaction, this much research from, we're gonna have a proposal, and every time we've gotten a new piece of information. So I think you are exactly correct, and I think that's where everyone is. So I think, you know, we've, we've asked for the possibility of maybe small group meetings with legal to make sure we're in the right place, but you're correct, that TBD what it is and where we can find consensus for that proposal. But that is exactly what needs to happen next. We've been putting this on, hoping that it would be the, kind of the guillotine over our heads that forces it to come out. But we live in an age of information, thankfully, and so we've gotten it. But the downside of that is that there's always information that we want to assimilate, so. Thank you all. Alright, with that, we'll move on to report of the chair and vice chair. I have nothing. Vice chair? I think he has nothing. Alright, report of the executive director? Nothing. Then we will move into closed session for advice of council. Alright, do I have a motion? Oh, when we get back, we will be adjourned. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, you moved that we go into closed session for the purpose of receiving advice of council.
Second.
I have a motion from council member Wharton, a second from Dugan. Any discussion? I'll roll call. Young?
Aye.
Pu?
Aye.
Mono?
Aye.
Wharton? Lopez Travis?
Aye.
Dugan? That is unanimous. We are in closed session and we will be adjourned when we are done. Thank you.